Hit that on mute button over there. Can you hear us now? Okay, good. Okay, if you could just summarize where you are, the changes since we last saw you and we'll take it from there.
Karen, we didn't hear with the beginning of the meeting. Are you starting with 79 South Greeley?
Yes, yes, we are recalling the, it's an adjourned public hearing, so it's been continued, so we're going straight into that right now.
Thank you. Hi. I do want to apologize. We did have some issues with receiving the invite, so only Denise from our, my team received the invite. The invite, so you're gonna see Denise all over the screen. But this is Tamika with Project Expeditors on behalf of Bank of America. And this is for 91 South Greeley Avenue, AKA 79 South Greeley Avenue. Now, we are proposing for some exterior alteration. Which include painting the building white, re-cladding the existing canopies. We are changing the signage as well as some exterior lighting. So now for our last meeting, it was told to us to submit the final package of what was originally submitted as well as the changes. Now, we did have the renderings completed as well. And I do believe that I have my engineers here for any questions regarding the lighting levels.
Okay, I think we're at the point where we recognize that we're going to see some spillage into the roadway. But it looks like it's unavoidable. You guys have to contend with the, I think it's a state regulation, not federal, right? Regarding the lighting around an ATM. And so we've got to balance those, and I think from what I've seen and heard, and I think our town engineer is in with the town board right now. But I spoke with him before, and he was satisfied with what you've done and how you've measured these things. So I think that's where we're balancing at this point, so if you could just, I don't know if you have a picture, you could just show in case anyone in the public wants to see what the spillage might be. And then we'll take questions from, you know, the public as well as the board members.
I can actually pull up the plan. Bear with me one second. And I share my screen. Please let me know that you can see my screen.
Yep, we can. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So this is starting with that 30-foot radius. And let me know if you need me to zoom in anymore as well. Is that good? Can you see that on your screen? Okay, good, just making sure. Okay, thanks. I do want to also just quickly pull up the rendering. Because I know that that was masked as well. I think that should be good.
Was there any help from the town's lighting there? Were we able to reduce any of the lighting because of use of, or, you know, tying into the existing lighting out there in the town on the sidewalk? I think there are only two lights out there, but I don't know if they have.
Yeah, I think, I believe there's only one, actually. So it's this light right here is the only light that's on the side. We're making the modifications right here. If you can see my cursor.
Yep.
Okay. For regarding the lighting levels, I'm gonna turn that to Stonefield. Jason, are you on? Sorry, I'm thinking maybe some technical difficulties, and I'm not sure if you can hear. Yep, he's having some bad connections. Okay, he's having bad connections, we can't hear, so one second, let me just try to message him here.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Sometimes you can't control technology. I don't see him now, I'm wondering if he's trying to just connect back in. So apologize, I just gave him a moment.
Is everyone hearing me okay?
Yes. Let me speak. We can't hear you if you're speaking. We should, we should. Yeah.
Where?
Okay.
I can hear you.
Yeah, you can hear us now. Okay. Can you hear us?
So through a little background, this project, this is the Bank of America. Yes, do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we do now.
Do you know, Jason, sorry, we went through the intro for the project, so I think right now they're just wondering if you were able to utilize that existing light pole in the design at all? If you can hear me.
So yeah. So we did that sheet for the existing light pole along South Greeley Avenue there. We did idling it. It really is just a feature, didn't need additional, but
We are getting every other word.
Ultimately, it would come down.
We are getting every other word that you're saying.
We should move on. Yeah, can someone else make his presentation or answer the questions?
Yeah. Jason, if you just want to check your email, I did send you that email back, if you want to respond to it. But I believe what he is saying is that it didn't really assist with any of the lighting levels.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay. So we have your plans, they're all consolidated from the beginning, thank you very much, so we have them now in one place.
Thank you.
Or anything else that you want to raise that was a change at all?
No.
Okay.
There was nothing else that was changed, yes.
Alrighty. Sabrina, are you there? Okay. Any questions from the board members?
Not here.
Any questions from the public? Do we have anyone with a hand raised on this at all?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, hi Sabrina.
Hi.
Did you have any comments or questions or issues?
I didn't, I did not know.
Okay. Is Bob back from the meeting also?
He is, he's online.
Okay. Bob, do you have any issues or questions on this application?
I have no comments.
Okay. And Dennis, I think you resolved the issue about the tree because they're not going to touch the trees.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is there a hand raised at all from the members of the public?
I don't see it.
No.
Okay. All right, not seeing any. And we don't have any questions or problems or issues, so is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Very good, thanks Dick. We have a resolution before us that's been prepared for this application. Does anyone have any questions or comments on it? I just had one, and that's on line 19 on page three. So again, I think it's state regulation, not federal regulation that we're dealing with. The balancing on the ATMs.
No comment.
I did have one question regarding the resolution.
Sure.
It just, it doesn't mention painting and the re-cladding, does that something that needs to be in this resolution of approval? It's only mentioning the lighting, I believe.
Well, do we have?
Oh, wait. It references the elevations. So it references, it should reference at least all plans in your plan set. Which include, which I believe includes the painting and the cladding and all of those details. I see it here, Jennifer, thank you, appreciate that. Perfect, okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four zero, motion's carried, and you're all set.
Great, thank you guys so much. I know this was a few meetings, so I do appreciate your time, and Felicia, thank you. I know I asked a lot of questions, I appreciate it. All right, everyone, enjoy the rest of your night, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Okay. Good night. Okay, we move on to our next item. And this is the public hearing for Gutzeit, 637 Bridges and 4 Winthrop Road. This is an application for a tree removal permit. This is the first we've seen this, right? So we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Little bit of move.
Second?
Same.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you, Dick. So if the applicant can just fill us in, and I know we have some additional pictures and additional information that will supply to us, thank you very much. Take this one off.
Great, good evening, everyone. Brad Schwartz from Zerrin and Slime Mets. Brian Gutzeit is in the planning board meeting room tonight. Frank Giuliano is on screen with me. So this is an application for a tree removal permit. The Gutseits own two lots adjoining back-to-back with a common rear property line. And as explained last month, the whole purpose behind this application is to remove a total of 19 trees, 10 of which are within a clearing grading limit line, in order to open up a line of sight between the two properties, again, both of which are owned by the Gutseits. So the main residence on one lot, and a pool and a pool house on the second lot. We did submit, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, some additional photos. I'll share the tree removal plan now on the screen. I know that Frank has spent quite a bit of time with Dennis going over, going over the replanting requirements, and we think we have a plan that satisfies all the relevant requirements.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interrupt real quick. Brad, I just want to clarify the lot with the pool and the pool house. By pool house, I'm assuming you're referring to the structure that's also a residence.
It's a primary residence, correct.
Correct, yep, okay, and so it's not just accessory features on that lot.
Thank you for clarifying, Jennifer. It's a primary residence, it meets all those requirements together with the pool.
Perfect, just wanted to clarify that for the record, thank you.
Thank you. So we colored in the drawing for purposes of ease of review during tonight's public hearing. The trees that are noted in the teal color are the trees within the clearing grading limit line that are proposed to be removed. And the purple-colored trees are outside of the grading and limit lines. And then two of the purple trees, tree number one and two, are within the regulated buffer. So that kind of just outlines all the different trees that are being removed. And a note was added to the plan for some feedback at the last meeting, and based on conversations with staff, that the shrubs in this area are not to be removed. And there was also a note that was added to the plan. It's in small font, a little difficult to read, but this is, this addresses replanting in the future in the event that one or both of the lots are sold to someone other than the Gutseits.
Right. Okay. Sabrina, do you have any questions or issues, anything you want to raise? Okay. Bob, are you, okay, Bob, are you set on this?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Chairman.
Dennis, I know you were out there quite a bit, so do you have any comments that you can help us with?
Sort of pre-inspection or preemptive concerns. Just so that I, you know, had opportunity or have opportunity, you know, prior to the removals, I included that language in the resolution of just requiring like a pre-cut inspection, just to make sure that it's the trees that are indicated on the plan. As well as if we're truly looking to have those shrubs remain, that they're, you know, some of them are of good size, so I just wanted, you know, we should have some, maybe some field protection out there for them, just so that they don't get damaged during the removal process.
Okay.
And then I'm fine with the, you know, with the replanting. I tried to allude to in the resolution, you know, they're actually quantity-wise planting more trees than are required.
Right.
So for the consideration of 121.6 and, you know, all the tree calculations and those algorithms, I only based it off of their required replacement number of 26, and so they meet, you know, those requirements as well. So I had no further comments or issues.
Okay, so you're satisfied with the plan, and I think you've spent a good deal of time on it, and whatever permit you grant will have those kinds of protections in there in terms of what's going to be protected during the course of clearing?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Any comments from board members, questions from board members?
Nope.
Okay, anyone's hand up for the public, or anyone here from the public? Yes, come on up, please. Hi, how are you?
Good. Hi, greetings, everyone. I'm Victoria Alzapi. I live at 657 Bridges Road. So I'm right next door to the new Gutzeit residence at 637 Bridges. And first, before I even start, I really want to share with you how difficult it is to appear before you right now. I have never come to a public hearing before about neighbors, trees, or residents, or any issue, and it's difficult. You know, I would like to have good relationships with my neighbors. We, I'm a lawyer by training, I know private property, we all are entitled to do what we want to do on our property. And we all have different ways of using our property and preferences, and I respect that. In this instance, I just really wanted to bring some things to your attention. I've been following the meetings, so I've heard some of your conversations. So some of what I have to say are questions, and some are just things that I want you to be aware of in your decision-making. And I would hope, you know, this is really, again, the first time I've come to a planning board meeting in a long time, and when I was looking at the agenda, I see that there's, you know, all the documentation, the submissions, and then there's the resolution. So I, you know, that was kind of surprising to me that the resolution would already be kind of on the table. And I just hope that you'll listen to what I have to say with an open mind, and if there's a need to, for me to submit anything else to you, or consider things over due to visit the site, whatever, I hope that you'll, you know, consider that seriously. So I want to thank you for everything you've been doing with this. I really want to thank Dennis also, all the staff. Mr. Gutzeit, you know, I have to tell you my history with the Gutzeit family is actually positive from a few years ago when they first purchased this property. I actually reached out to them because the previous resident used a lot of pesticides. And I'm a habitat gardener, I'm a pollinator gardener, you know, an attorney, public policy person by training, but have taken a lot of courses about, you know, wildlife, nature, pollination, all of that. So they, you know, I asked if they could consider not using pesticides on their property. And they were totally amenable, open, totally willing to do that, connected me to their Realtor who managed the property. So that was my sense of them, you know, they're lovely people, this is not personal in any way. And I'm hoping that we can find some way that can meet everyone's needs. But, you know, I also think about the balancing of private property and the right to do what one wants to do, and then also the policy issues, right? So the environmental issues, we, you know, I brought some pages from the comprehensive plan that talk about habitat and, you know, in harmony with nature, and we just are completing the natural resources inventory, the NRI, and our tree code is very respectful about trees and habitat and clean air. We're in a climate crisis right now, so we think that trees are very important. So, you know, with that context, I'm going to share with you some thoughts in four categories. One is why these trees. Another is these trees too. The third is what about the nesting squirrels? And the fourth is what about the bobcats? So when I think about why these trees, right, so the plan is there. As, I guess I just want you to possibly tune in on an empathy level to how the experience of this whole, you know, rebuilding of this home has been for a neighbor. When the, when I first learned that they were going to take down the house and build a new one, I remember there was, I believe, an initial tree permit, or my understanding was that there were only going to be, I think, three or four trees coming down. And because I'm very sensitive to trees to begin with, right, I mean, in all spirit of disclosure, I'm on the conservation board, you know, I do work around environmental conservation. So I thought, oh, three or four trees, you know, that's totally reasonable. And I, you know, I thought, okay, this is what's going to happen on this new property. So then, and also, you know, bearing in mind that this was, this is a one-acre zone, right, on 7 Bridges Road. And also, this is actually a wildlife corridor, I don't know how much you've discussed this, but on the other side of 7 Bridges to 63 is a wetlands, right there, an active wetlands. That actually feeds back into the prime sanctuary, so there's a lot of woodland there, this is an area that the animals come from that, from the prime, from that wetlands, and then behind Winthrop is actually a New York State DEC wetlands. You know, many acres of protected wetland, so the animals, and actually, I brought you kind of a something to share from a report that I'm going to send to you, but this shows out of my office window, a bobcat passing through. So literally, this bobcat went from 7 Bridges up through between the houses and and up to the 63, you know, residence beyond. I know that, I don't know if this is in the team, Dennis, you already have this, but I'll give it to you. So, yeah, all right. So this is a, it's a wildlife corridor, this property, and so just wanted you to kind of be included in that. So my understanding with this being a one-acre zone is that the property, the Gutzeit property on Winthrop is one acre, and the Gutzeit property on 7 Bridges is one acre. And so I assumed that, you know, as a resident, I moved to my house. It was advertised as a park-like property, right, this was even before Santee, before Irene, before we lost a lot of trees. Very woodland, a lot of woods, on my property, the trees and properties and the whole, the character of the neighborhood. And so I thought, okay, you know, it'll be intact except for taking these few trees down. Because I guess the decision was made not for the family, the Gutseits, not to come before whatever entities they needed to, to join the properties and make it one. So I kind of made the assumption that there would be two functioning properties. So then, as time passed, this new tree permit was applied for. And I was actually very surprised, because I thought, well, why were these trees not included in the initial permit? Because for me, as a resident, as a neighbor, my expectation, right, life is all about expectations in many ways. I thought that they were only taking down three or four trees. I might have looked at this entirely differently earlier and shared feedback or whatever, you know, brought, you know, thought more about it in that respect. So then, I understood, you know, okay, they want to take these trees down, and the feeling, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, please correct me, that the feeling was that they weren't going to join the properties, but they wanted to have a view from their Winthrop house to the pool and to the other property. So they wanted to kind of clear the trees, basically the buffer, right, and we all know that buffers are part of living here in Newcastle, right? As a resident, it's interesting, because you kind of rely on the town to adhere to the laws that are on books, and there are some exceptions, of course, made. But I thought, okay, well, this is interesting, there's a buffer there, is that going to come down? And as a resident who lives next door, you know, I love where I live. I take pictures of the, of the view in the morning, as the sun rises, as the sun sets. I have a beautiful, very fortunate to have a beautiful view shed. It's the trees on my own property and the trees beyond it. So many of the trees on the Gutzeit residence are part of my view shed, my enjoyment of my property, my experience of my property. Not to mention the habitat value and the birds and all the animals that live there. So I thought, okay, this is interesting, and again, wanting to be supportive of what they wanted to do and how they wanted to enjoy their property. And thought, okay, well, maybe they're just going to take down a few trees so they can see between. And not to go too deep, I mean, you know the, you know the history. The decision, I guess, was made to leave some of the trees that are closer to my side, right, so I'm on, onto the north of this property.
So that would be to the right of that sketch up there?
The left, that little half square.
50% chance.
Can I, is it okay if I walk? Do you mind if I walk over there?
Sure, you can actually bring the microphone with you, I think.
Okay.
We haven't done this in so long, I mean.
Right, and this is the first meeting I've been to, by the way, without a mask, this is like radical for me to be, but it's important, so. Okay, so if anyone can't hear me, look. And maybe you'll hear this map much better than I do, this site plan, but I'm trying to work it, you know, this is not my professional area. Right, so this is my house, and so this is that whole line here, right? So my understanding is the decision was made, and again, I appreciate everyone's efforts to try to compromise and try, you know, to balance here. So while this whole area, and this whole area are part of my view shed, right? I initially thought maybe there would just be a few trees taken to get a lot, a side of lot, line side, but now I understand it's this whole area, but that they were going to leave some of these trees. One of my questions actually is that this points to a maple grove that will remain. I think those are kind of right in the corner, just FYI, just I'm not sure if that's, if I'm mistaking that. And then there are a bunch of other trees here and some shrubs underneath, and then all of these trees, and then coming down here. So some of my questions of why these trees are, is it necessary? In other words, when the decision was made to clear these, which I guess is what I initially then thought, there would be the view from the house to the other house, right, which, me having empathy, that, you know, I understand they want to do that. But then I wondered, why did these trees have to come down? This is a major part of my view shed, there's some really beautiful tall trees here. A few of these are kind of native, you know, hickory and a couple of other trees that are really, really tall. And so I wondered, are these really, just in the spirit of asking, are these really part of the view? In other words, this is so far into the corner. Do these help achieve their goal of wanting to see through, which I understand that goal? So I wanted to question that and ask about that, is it really necessary to take those down? Does it really, would really compromise their enjoyment of their property to leave at least a couple of those tall trees? Because I think what they want to replant here is much smaller trees, or trees that won't get that tall, right? So I see these trees, these trees are up on the skyline from my perspective. So that was one question. And then again, the other question was to make sure, are those maple trees the ones in the corner? And then here, the discussion about, you know, a bunch of big trees there in the clearing grading line. Are the shrubs, are you talking about just the shrubs, like technically what we think of as shrubs? Or are we talking about any tree that's under, you know, four-inch caliber that might be also considered a shrub as opposed to a tree for the tree ordinance purposes? So that's a question, because I think there are both in there. So at any rate, those are some of my questions about the plan. There was, there were one or two here that I also was wondering about. I think it's 26, 27, there were two Norway spruces, and maybe this is a little less paper. I know in my view shed, there are two, one or two huge Norway spruces that are like one of the most painful parts of the skyline there. I think these are smaller ones, so I believe that they are keeping some of the bigger spruces, but wanted to ask about that. So that's under the category of, you know, why these trees.
Well, we have, let me interrupt a little bit here, because maybe you can shed some light on this. In looking at the schedule, for example, I'm looking at the corner, I take your point. But, and I don't, this is what we have in front of us. For example, those two spruces that you mentioned, the applicants considering or telling us that the condition of those two spruces is dead. And they look at, for example, tree number three and eight up there in that corner, which are, well, eight's not scheduled to be taken out, but number three is, and that's, the condition is it's a black birch. It's said to be in poor condition. Number seven is a Norway maple said to be in poor condition. So I guess, you know, this always becomes a little bit subjective, but I think you, you make a good point in saying that that doesn't necessarily enhance the view shed. But if they're in poor condition, if they're going to replace some of these with other shrubs and trees, that'll be presumably in better condition. It seems like something that seems, strikes us, strikes me anyways, a little bit reasonable. Now, if you, if you had, for example, I don't know, I don't know which one that might be, the big spruce? I'm trying to track it. Do you know which one it might be?
I'm wondering are along this side, I don't know if you can move this up, but they're, they're basically, um, yeah, I guess those along the side there, right, 25, 26.
Yeah, 23, yeah, 23 is a bitter nut hickory and again, said to be in poor condition.
Right.
Which is, I take your point, is there?
Right, because I see them, right now there are no leaves. And I was thinking I should submit a picture to you, right now there are no leaves, but I'm pretty sure there are a bunch of trees there that still get leaves.
Well, yeah, they may have leaves, but dead is no leaves, but poor is, you know, not, not doing well. And, you know, usually compromised. Sometimes we hear, I, I don't think that these are the case. Sometimes we hear, I'm sure Dennis hears this all the time, that sometimes when they're poor condition, they're compromising safety. I don't think that's a situation here because I think these are far enough away from the house that that's not an issue. But we can, I mean, look at number five, what is number five? Is it dead remains or something? I don't know what that is.
Right, and I wasn't concerned about.
So I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, and I think you make a very good point that gee, some of these really are not necessarily in that view shed that we're looking into the other lot. But in looking at what has been presented to us in the condition, these conditions are coming from a licensed landscaper, landscape scientist, I guess, I don't know. They are in time, okay, thank you. You know, these are the conditions. So virtually all of the ones that are being taken out, there's only one that's really in good condition too, right? So number, it's a hemlock, number 11. Can anyone find it? Can you find it up there?
Number 11 is in.
Oh, there, it's right smack in the middle of the view shed. Okay, so that's unfortunately one of the ones that sort of has to come down if you, if you're going to do this. And the other is the number six. And I don't know where that is.
Right, number six. That's Norway, I think that was in the corner, I think it's in the corner, right?
Can I, um?
Sure.
Wait, I have some questions. So first of all, your, your first comment was that you're, you know, that you hope that we would listen and you see that there's a resolution on the agenda. And I want to make clear that we listen, the reason the resolution's on the agenda is if there was no objection, that we could just process applications quickly. But this doesn't mean just because there's a resolution on the agenda, we have already voted on it. Happy to listen and happy to, to take in, I mean, I, I can't speak for the rest of the, I, I like when there are public members commenting, it means that there's relevance to what we're doing, right? So I'm, I'm happy to hear from you, so thank you, and we're listening, we're open to your comments. So that's just to, to be clear. Next, you mentioned the sighting of the bobcat. I live on the other side of town, but I've seen a bobcat on my property, my wife just saw one last week. So it's, it is exciting to see the, the wildlife. I have some questions about your property relative to the property in question. It says it's, Brad, can you zoom out a little bit?
Yep, I'm doing it right now.
Okay, thank you. So your house is to the north on the left on the screen, right? And can I ask, I mean, without getting too, you know, you don't have to answer, but you know, what, you said you're, you're viewing this way. Is that from the first floor, the second floor, the outdoors of your house? Like what rooms of your house, what, what is viewing that way?
It's a one story house.
Okay.
With a yard, a big yard. And, you know, my garage over here. So, you know, I'm not really walking through here very much, but I do spend time in the backyard and coming out of my garage. So I, when I'm in, this is my patio, when I'm in here, I do a lot of gardening. This is what I see this way, when I'm even, you know, pawing the dog, I see this way. I know it's hard to see, but you really can see, it's very rich right now, I mean, it's really beautiful. How many trees are here, how many trees are, you see this, I know this has to come down if this moves forward, but this actually looks really beautiful from the street. But again, but you know, I'm not here to start this project, that's not my goal. So, yeah, so I see this, you know, in here. I think maybe actually it does make sense to skip to two things, if that's okay?
Sure.
So when I ask, you know, what about the bobcats? Since we're talking about the bobcats, so the bobcat came basically through here and walked that way. So right now, and this is, and this is an interesting jurisdictional question. I don't really know who has jurisdiction over this. But one of the questions I have about this whole project is that there's a pool, obviously, that was going to be a fence. And my understanding is there's going to be a fence possibly all the way here to the corner of the property. Right, and this is a bigger public policy question, not just in my own interest. Right now, the property behind me from the corner has a fence, the whole property back at my property adjoining theirs. The next property also has a fence and the next property has a fence. So right now, we have three fences in a row with no break. So once this fence goes up, if this fence abuts this and there's no space, where, what about the bobcats? In other words, all these animals that are coming from this wetland, and I'm sorry, I apologize to Brian Goodside because I really, I really, this is not personal in any way, but these animals leave this wetland and I see them coyotes boxes, they walk through and they come through. And so they're now going to have another fence blocking in a major corridor that they use and live with.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, but unless I'm mistaken, somebody can correct me here, but I, I think that somebody putting up a fence on their property is actually a matter of right. And I don't think the planning board, I don't think the planning board has the authority to say you cannot have a fence as long as a fence meets the requirements.
And that question's not before us today, anyway, no, there's no fence.
I'm afraid of that, right?
Exactly. I've heard her prior conversations, I actually told her that I wouldn't put a fence up.
I'm trying to, excuse me.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm trying to get to the cogent parts of your concerns that actually we have some jurisdiction over that we might be able to consider.
Right, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The reason, you know, and I was not, I'm not specifically a cushion for the fence, but I was just thinking if there's any way that as part of the, what we're coming to agreement on, that even if a small space could be left for some thoroughfare, but that's just, and yes, you know, we did talk about that, and I don't know if that's still on the table, but you know, that's something that we have discussed a little bit. So that's the question about the bobcats. Then the other question about what about the squirrels? This kind of is maybe, I don't know, maybe this isn't in your jurisdiction actually, but I'll just go through it quickly to Tom's point. This is a row of hemlocks. And I do want to be grateful, thankful that really there are no trees coming down between our properties. They haven't proposed any trees coming down. There's a row of beautiful, healthy stand of hemlocks, like literally right on the barrier bar between our properties. And, and Brian Goodside and I have talked about, if at all possible, I would love the fence to be on their side of the property because there are nesting squirrels up there that live on, you know, wander around the property and I don't want them to not have access to the, the trees. Again, that's a fence question. It's tricky because no one really has jurisdiction over the fence. So, but again, maybe we can pick that up. So finally, the question, one question that I have around these, what is my, these trees too? That was my final, right? So we know what's being proposed here, and I guess there's maybe some like internal angst for me. And we see the first tree permit, that I thought was going to be the whole one, for three or four trees. And then the next tree permit, that really is much more sense. So there's a little something in me that is a little bit thinking, okay, so this is all going to go through. Well, what if next year, there's another tree permit? And that one says, these are going to come down and maybe some of the, you know, who knows? And so this is interesting, I've never encountered this before. I don't know, you know, right, there's that public policy tension or, you know, how I enjoy my property and the value of property value, right? And it being wood, woodlands and all of that, and how they're able to enjoy their property. So does the planning board ever work with, with an applicant to make an agreement to understand that, I think, and even as these words come out, I don't know if this is even humanly possible, but so that next year, there's not another one that suddenly then.
No, we can't, I mean, as a matter of fact, the tree law is pretty clear in terms of, first of all, a property owner has certain rights with regard to clearing out a certain number of trees without any permit, including larger trees. So, and there's nothing that precludes, that says this is your last permit for a given approval. So there's nothing in the law that provides for that kind of prohibition. So it could be in theory, they come back, a person could come back every single year and come up with different trees that they would like to clear. And if makes sense, it makes sense. In this particular issue, I mean, as I understand it, the applicant is, is actually supplementing, I hope, it's been so long, supplementing by putting trees in here, giving you additional buffer. I know you're talking in terms of view shed, we normally talk in terms of buffering to customer, customers.
Applicants.
Applicants and owners, property owners, customers, I gotta get.
Clients and witnesses.
So you're getting at, one question I was going to have is the replacements. Could we talk about the replacements?
Yeah, we have more over here as well. And the issue that we have that really is before us is, obviously there's some trees coming down, but the thing that we wrestled with the last time we talked was about this area here. And the zoning is that there's supposed to be a 15 foot buffer between, in this, in this zone between properties. So what it came down to is between these two properties, which are owned by the same person, we're basically looking at 30 feet that would be cleared outside of what we normally see in the zone. And, you know, we wrestled with that and we talked about it. We did not on balance think that that was an issue and that it would not impact the neighbors because after all, the applicant was actually supplementing, you know, trees in here and trees in here, where we would expect that there might be impacts due to people, other people's property. So although that might be in your view shed, the issue for us was whether it's usually, the concern is, is these two properties in terms of view shed, that's where the 15 foot buffer really comes into play on both of those properties. So it's the 30 foot there. But, you know, given the different circumstances that we had in this particular case, we were leaning toward granting approval. But you've raised some issues here, and maybe we should look more carefully at some of these trees. But it seems to me that in looking at them, everything that I'm looking at here in terms of it's being proposed to be cleared is either in poor or dead condition with two exceptions. And I think we all agree that the, the two exceptions are ones that are right smack in the middle of the area that would have to be cleared if this is going to work. And they're not, I think they're spruces and hemlocks so that it's not something that you could say it's a, it's a canopy tree, deciduous canopy tree that you could just leaf up and branch up, and maybe that would work just effectively. So maybe if we had that, would be a different situation.
Yeah, it's interesting that you point that out because I was thinking about this myself recently that in the conversations that you've had, you talk about, okay, if it's, the property is sold someday, should we plant? And the experience of someone in a one acre zone is you're used to, right? We're, we're conditioned to see these boxes, right? You know, these boxes of, of protected property with, with trees around them, or foliage. And so, yeah, I mean, it definitely will change my experience of this, you know, and I know these are a lot of damage, but it, it, they do look beautiful, I have to tell you what this is. But I understand that they're going to be evaluated and that's the key area.
Can we talk about the replacements?
Sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to jump in here for a second and see if I can sort this out. First of all, I'm not aware of a squirrel who cannot climb a fence. And if you have squirrels who can't climb fences, send them to my yards so they keep, keep them out of the vegetable garden. So the habitat question, and that, that cat is able to go anywhere he wants to go. And I.
What?
The bobcat.
The bobcat.
You think so?
Oh, yeah. You can climb any fence, absolutely. He can go anywhere he wants to go. And my guess is if there are fences all over the place already, it's proof that he can go everywhere, anywhere he wants to go because he's there. So that's number two. I don't think that this is a habitat question for me. There's just not enough significant tree canopy here for this actually to be accumulated, to be a habitat question for species of particular concern here. So that's number one. Number two, I understand the desire to not lose the trees in your view shed, but to ask a property owner to, to not be able to take advantage of what's on his property in deference to your appreciation and enjoyment of what's on his property is not something that I think that we have the right to do. Seems to me that's an overreach. I am concerned though that I understand us wanting to advance this and preparing the, the resolution in order to move this along, but I was never myself completely on board with this yet. And my concerns are, first of all, there are, we see these statements all the time from arborists and experts and people who say that, well, the tree's in poor condition. Well, as Bob said, that's a subjective term. And I'm looking at photographs, I think, of the trees that are actually listed to be in poor condition. And, I mean, they don't look diseased to me, you know? They look like maybe they're planted a little too close together, look to me like maybe they could be cleaned up a little bit, they could be cared for. But I don't see these trees to be in poor condition. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong photographs, but I think these are the ones that are the Norway, the Norway spruces which are in line in the back, which are separated in two pieces of property. The, the photographs don't make that case for me. So I'm, and, and the hemlock, well, just because hemlock is in the way, doesn't mean that the hemlock therefore needs to go. If it's a, if it's a healthy hemlock, there's no legitimate reason to take it down, as far as I can see. To me, the 30 foot buffer, I think, still should be something which we pay attention to, something that we still ought to honor because these are still, unless I'm mistaken, these are still two different lots. And unless these lots, two lots are joined into one lot, that does not go away. It's still there. Now, we can decide to honor it, we can decide to say that, well, it ought to be maintained as a buffer, or we can grant some sort of relief and say it can be taken out for the benefit of the property owner. I don't, for me, I don't, I haven't come to my conclusion yet on which way it ought to go, but I think that ought to be talked about because there's no guarantee that one day these lots aren't going to be, one lots, the lots aren't going to be in the same ownership. And they're going to revert back to essentially the one acre lot configuration that these buffers are supposed to protect. So for me, I would like to better understand, and you know, maybe Dennis can help us here. I mean, I, maybe the site business has called for, I don't know, but I'm looking at these photographs and these trees don't look like they are in poor condition. They look to me as though, maybe I'm wrong, maybe the disease, it looked to me as though there's, there's, there's no justification to take them down based on the tree condition. The only justification that I can see that, that is, is being made here that has any links to it is we want to take these trees down to be, in order to be able to look from one piece of property to the other, to essentially visually join the two pieces of property. And to me, that's not justification to take down six or seven or eight trees that might otherwise be healthy and not justification to eliminate a buffer between two adjoining lots.
And, and one other issue that we've really wrestled on with this, this, this application is, and we've been working on the words, and I think the words are in here, but we've all recognized that if the properties fall into different ownership, the enforcement mechanism is almost non-existent to, to go back and say to the new owner, now you have to restore the 15 foot buffer. It's, it's.
It's not going to happen.
Exactly, exactly. We, it's, you know, we've got words in here and it'll be on the resolution, but that's, that's been something that we kind of wrestled with right from the get-go in case that happens or when that does eventually happen. So, and, and maybe there's something, the planting plan that we have, it looks to me that in this area that, that they're looking at to clear, Dennis, there's no, there's just going to be shrubs in that area?
So, yeah, there is, um, there's, there's like a line of trees, a line of shrubs relatively close to each other. And, and the shrubs, you know, they're not young, you know, so there are, there are some mature shrubs. So that was the sort of revision was that the trees were going to be removed and, you know, where the shrubs were existing were going to remain.
But what, what was the area, was it 30 feet, 35 feet, 45 feet? This, this spread that we're, that is being proposed for this. This, this spread that we're, that is being proposed for this, basically a turf visual connector by the time we, the, the, the trees were cleared? I think we looked at that last time, we had a number. I think you had given us some sort of number.
Is this 106? I mean, I thought that's what that was representing. This, this line of length, I think, is indicated as 106 feet. And that's, and right, and shrubs are gonna be removed from this area. So, the width of that alleyway was gonna be 106 feet.
So, we talked about this a fair amount last time.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, from my perspective, we talked about it sufficiently and asked these questions about, you know, the single property or over two lots and the hypotheticals about what, what happens if we separate the lots. And I wanna, I do wanna just get at, talk for a minute about the proposed replacement trees in, in a second. But, but we did have a lot of these, talk about a lot of these points last time. I think we reached a place where we felt comfortable enough to get to drafting a resolution to then have this public hearing and then listening to any public comment. I appreciate the public comment very much. For the most part, doesn't change my mind all that much on, essentially, where I thought we landed last time, which is that we should find the best way we can to allow this to move forward while being as sensitive as we possibly can. I think we talk about hypotheticals a lot, right? What happens if, you know, one of the lots gets sold and there's two different owners? And what happens in any kind of scenario? But we also need to think about the, not just hypotheticals, but where we are today. And we have one property owner and will likely be one property owner for the foreseeable future that has, you know, private property and wants to make some changes to it. And, and, you know, it has come before us and, and we are charged with thinking through what is the most responsible way to act on this request. So, to that end, can we, I don't know who the right person is, but just, just talk through the replacement, and the replacement trees, again, to your point, Bob, do take this neighbor and other neighbors into account. That's, that's, that's sort of the point of the replacement is to think through what impacts might there be on adjoining property owners? And then, Tom, I think you made this point that while there's a concern of a private property owner, you know, an action of one private property owner impeding the other private property owner's enjoyment, there's the reverse, right? There's, these are all, these are private properties that, you know, there, you do have certain rights and, and, I guess, we're trying to weigh, weigh those rights here. So, can we talk about the, the replacement trees?
Yeah, Frank, can you jump in here and address that first?
Number one, I'd like to just clarify a few items. One is that the condition of the trees were not done by myself as a landscape architect, but by a licensed arborist, which actually is the arborist that the, the town of Newcastle uses, which is Olmstead Tree Service. That's in a report that is part, your board has seen. And that's how the condition of the trees were determined by the arborist after reviewing the trees. Dennis has been out there, and I agree with you. From one side of the, if you look at those pictures, one side is taken from the Mr. Goodsite's main home. And it, they, because of that one blue spruce, they look like they're in good condition. But then you look at the opposite side and they're not in good condition. There are two trees on the right, the south side or the right side that are within the 15-foot buffer. And they are actually a huge, they're listed there at the top as number one and two. They're very large, very poor condition. And not only poor, but they're hazard trees because of the type of variety they are. And Dennis would agree with this, that the branches, you could, if you go there, you'll see, fall right out of the trees. This is interesting, the, the neighbors' comments, because we've gone out of our way after two meetings with the Environmental Conservation Board, which the neighbor has been involved with, to preserve every tree on the north side or left, or on the left side of the property, to preserve that view shed, to screen this property. This property has a swimming pool and a house on it. Mr. Goodsite has gone out of his way, not only to screen from the neighbors on each side in our plan, but preserve every tree that's possible on the north side or the neighbor's left side property at number 65. There are no trees being removed on that side at all. There are actually trees being supplemented. The trees that are going to be replaced, do you want to go to the landscape, the plan, planting plan, Brad?
Mm-hmm.
Here, just zoom down a little. We're replacing, number one, we're, we're trying to reestablish the tree line along Seven Bridges Road. So, three-and-a-half-inch caliber native swamp maples are being planted along the road. Because this, we're not looking this strictly as a preservation of, of surrounding the property with more trees. The idea is to bring in a habitat which has been destroyed in the front due to trees dying over the years. So, six huge swamp red maples are being planted along the Seven Bridges. Then there are tree, not all these trees on this plant list, by the way, are, are part of the replacement. There's a lot more trees here being planted than the replacement trees. The only trees used for replacements are the ones with the star next to them, which is the red maples, the arboviti, only the large ones. The, the understory, Dennis has required, has asked if we added some understory trees. So, we added the red buds and the flowering dogwood. The amalachus, the green giant, and the spruce aren't even calculated into the replacements, but we're doing them. So, there is a tremendous, there's over 50 trees being planted on this site, not the 28 that are noted. There are existing 39 trees existing that will be protected on the site. So, this is a heavily forested site, especially on the north side and the, the north-right quadrant and along the front. There's a driveway easement on the right or south side that we're trying to screen out because there's a driveway of the neighbor's driveway there. But those aren't even included in the replacement trees, they're just part of the screening. So, this is quite an extensive planting plan. It's not only a tree replacement plan. This is, the only trees that are part of that are the, the, with the stars. The rest are all, go to the planting plan again, Brad, move over.
Sure.
Just move it to the right. No, opposite way. Only those trees with the stars next to them are calculated as replacement trees. All the other trees are just additional trees that are, that are part of this landscape plan. So, there's an extensive amount of trees being planted here. As far as the fence, the pool fence is four foot high. And, and that's part of the pool code, the pool has to be fenced. And a four-foot fence isn't gonna prevent any.
Yeah.
Especially a deer from getting over to the, through the properties.
And I, I think Dennis and you would confirm that, to Frank's point, the trees that are marked with the asterisk, those are the ones that you use to calculate and to determine that they actually exceed the town code requirement. And so, what I think Frank's point is, in addition to exceeding what is required on the code, he's really, he's planting much, much more that would exceed that standard even by more.
Right. I, I think the only, it has no bearing. The only correction I would make is I think you'd want the asterisk next to the Norway spruces versus those stooges based on, these are just my notes when I calculated it. But it gets there, yes, you've exceeded. It's an exceedance by, by five, yes.
By 31 trees.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm satisfied. And as long as those, you know, the additional trees are referenced in the resolution as well, not just the placement, because if that's what's being proposed, then I want to make sure that that's being codified. You know, when I'm looking at it quickly, I don't see it, but it might, it might be in here. Do you know if it's in here?
Should be on page two, lines 32. So, I think it goes from 32 down to 36. I think it's picked up there.
Yeah, okay.
Because again, I think we're incorporating by reference the actual planting plan that the applicant has submitted.
Right.
Victoria, can you speak into the mic?
May I please ask a couple of clarifying questions to Mr. Giuliano?
Sure.
Mr. Giuliano, I, I totally hear what you're saying and that's why I preface my comments with the appreciation for keeping a lot of the trees on the northern side between the properties. So, I'm grateful for that. One thing you mentioned is the fence is four feet, somewhere along the line. I understood the fence to be six feet. Am I getting that wrong?
I, I don't think it's relevant.
Yeah, can, can we just stick to what's.
Saving for the fences?
Well, just to what's relevant before us.
Okay. And so, I guess I'm an actual person telling you my perception of the, of the trees that are being replaced, right? So, I totally hear you, the number is great, right? They're not native trees, which is, you know, so if you were, you know, that's fine. And people can choose the trees they want. My concern would not be that area towards the Seven Bridges. It's, there's, there isn't really a lot there right now. It's fine to be able to see through it, it's part of the character of the, you know, all the houses there. I'm not totally opposed to that, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't meet, a lot of these and the height of the trees doesn't replace that view shed or some of those deciduous, really tall trees. I mean, I love conifers, nothing against conifers, but I just want to say that the, you know, the additional trees, yes, they are additional trees, and trees are wonderful in number. But it doesn't really address the concern that I have about what it will feel like. Again, I, I mentioned right up front, the tension and the, between the interests of different property owners, it's very real. And again, I, I come in peace with this, but there will be a gap for me in seeing. And again, no one's, I'm not entitled to everything that I'm, you know? So, I believe the words coming out of my mouth. But it is such an unusual situation. I guess my hope is, you know, whatever can be left there or if there's an eye to trying to keep the, some canopy or replace some of the canopy. But that's not to say that I don't think this is a very generous tree replacement plan. I appreciate the efforts around it. I guess it's just some of the losses of some, even though they may be in decline. So, that, that's the perspective of someone who actually already lives here and whose expectation had been the one-acre property, you know, surrounded by buffer.
The one acre is a minimum, though, not a maximum.
The one-acre zoning is the minimum?
Yeah.
So, anyone can convert their property into a two-acre or they.
You can too.
That's not, that's not what's happening. No, no. Okay. Please just do one acre. Yeah. And the remaining is two lots.
And, you know, it might be interesting to go see the property. I mean, just, you know, again, I, I respect that I'm sure there was want and desire to move it fast and I get that. And they've been working on the house for a long time. I've been a good doobie. You know, I've been, haven't, you know, I've been very patient with how that's been happening and I, I understand what they want to do and it's great. But it might be interesting for me to see it. Okay, thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do we have any other questions or anyone else, members of the public, anyone with a hand up?
Yeah, I.
Nick, yes? Yes, sir.
I'll pop in for just a second. I, I agree with what Tom said. We, what we do is we have rules about trees. I'm curious as to how old these trees are that are in poor condition. You know, I think the maple, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, a maple, a maple tree is about a 30-year liver, you know, it lives that long. And if it's, if these trees are, you know, planted 30 years ago or whatever the right number is, I think that they're gonna come down anyway. You know, we, we also try to accommodate the thought of view shed, although it's not really in the regulations that we have, as I recollect. And so, I think that the, the landowners here are, are in their, within the, the bounds of our rules. But I would think that it may, would be a way that, that there'd be a little bit of a compromise and a few more trees left without bringing them down if, you know, they seem to be in a good place relative to watering and sunshine and things like that. So, I could see a, a touch of a compromise here, you know, for a few trees. But by and large, my sense is that the property owner is within his rights, period.
So, I, I just wanted to comment on some of that because, Tom, you, you had made mention regarding whether I agree or disagree with the condition. Because obviously, I evaluated this first as a permit that was issued to me that I, meaning the environmental coordinator, that I had to eventually deny when we realized the jurisdiction changed. And it's like, no, this goes before the planning board. And so, I had my initial notes and I just had a column that was, do I require tree replacement or not? I didn't, you know, I didn't really get into, is it good, is it fair, is it? And for the majority of these trees, I was in the yes camp. There were a couple that I said no. But when the application came in, regardless of what the condition assessment was by Olmstead, they, they were willing to meet those replacement requirements. And, you know, obviously, the board has, you know, the ability to, you know, make suggestions to try to reduce the number of removals and, and whatnot. But the way the code is written and having this conversation, you know, with, with the town prosecutor and town council, I'm like, I might understand that if, if an applicant is willing to meet the replacement requirements, then you, you know, I'm talking about like, say, a tree, I receive an application. I, I cannot prevent the removal of a tree. I cannot deny the permit and say, no, you, you can't remove that tree when you're willing to meet the replacement requirements of the code. The understanding that I've received from both legal parties is, yes, that's the correct interpretation of the code.
Fair enough. So, that's important. However, unless I'm mistaken, unless I'm mistaken, the planning board has discretion on these matters. And the question is for me, for you, is not whether you have the authority to deny the removal of a tree, but whether in your assessment, these trees are in poor condition or are dead, which is what is being attested to in the application. And by just looking at photographs, which is not the right way to determine these things, but that's what we have in front of us for tonight, by looking at these photographs, it appears to me that they aren't diseased, it appears to me that they are in good, good health. And, you know, maybe on the other side of the tree, it doesn't look so good, but I don't, I don't have that evidence in front of me. And I was looking for perhaps some information from you, if you have any memory of the condition of the trees, whether you want to give us your opinion about that now or whether you'd like to go out and take a look again. That's what I was trying to determine.
Okay. So, on, on that subject, then, I do recall, I, I think it was shown, maybe Mr. Goodsite introduced them, that, right, there is a, it's a black and white copy of trees. One side, you know, looks one way and the other side looks another way. But I remember part of my assessment, you know, now that they've reached this stage in life is that, yeah, they were planted too close together. And that, you know, to me, I, I didn't get a chance to speak to the arborist from Olmstead, but I think that's, you know, part of what went into the condition assessment. Because it's like, not only are they not, you know, in great condition now, but moving forward, you know, they're all showing signs of, of decline and they're planted too close together. So, the prognosis is not good.
So, the prognosis. So, the prognosis is not good under their current condition, being planted too close together. But forests thin out over time and trees survive the thinning out, you know? And that, so, I mean, where I'm going with this is a couple of things. First of all, could these be thinned? Take the trees that are in, in, in a good condition and the ones that are. are in poor condition, clearly the ones that are dead, but the ones that are in poor condition, be taken out as a, as a way to not guarantee, but to hopefully increase the likelihood of the continued health of the remaining ones, right? And is that something which, and leave the ones that are healthy? And there's a Norway spruce, spruce and a hemlock here, which are ten inch caliber, I think. The total number of trees being taken out here is like two hundred caliber inches if you add them all up. And it's, it's just a lot. Now, I'm not suggesting that therefore by that measure alone, but it seems to me it's a, it's a really big ask for the purposes of, some of which are the purposes of being able to look from one piece of property to another. And the view shed, the, the, the view shed principle or the view shed criteria that we might apply, actually, I think is for scenic view sheds, not for view sheds between pieces of property. So it's a, it's a different, that's a whole different category of things. And I don't think that should necessarily apply here. So I guess I'm asking there is no, I understand the purpose, and if this is going to be done, the predicate is these trees are going to be taken out for the purposes, the predicate is these trees will be taken out in order to be able to have a clear view from one piece of property to another. That's the if this is going to be done. And I, I don't think this board has the obligation to honor that predicate. The board has the obligation to figure out what the right thing to do here is with respect to all the other things that we worry about. So I just would like to be sure that, that we are really looking at this in a way which is, I think, maybe a little bit more careful with the facts of the case, having to do with the health of the trees and what else could be done. And if the trees are thinned, if the trees are somehow better taken care of, if the trees that are in good condition remain, that doesn't mean, I don't think that this property owner is going to be able to see from one side of the property to the other. I mean, maybe they could be limbed up. Maybe there are other things that could happen here, instead of just, well, let's just take them all out. So that's where I'm going with this, is a little bit of a, a lighter hand, a lighter touch, a little bit more sensitive touch with respect to what's going on here, in the interest of also honoring the thirty-foot buffer separation between the two pieces of property. I'm, I'm wondering if there isn't some way to come together and, and get, you know, everybody wins something out of this. And I think the some things that we want to win are important things. Or that I want to win, sorry. I think are the important for the planning board to do.
Can you address some of Mr. Curly's comments, please?
Yes, please.
I'd like to just backtrack a lot further than the planning board. We had two conservation board meetings. At the first one, the neighbor spoke, and we mitigated the plan. Originally, there was going to be twenty-nine trees removed, none on that north property line. There were trees that were in poor condition on the south property line. We were asked to cut that back by the conservation board. Then there was a site meeting by the conservation board to review these.
So I just to correct you, it was the environmental review board, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear that.
It was the environmental review board.
I'm sorry, the environmental review board. There was two meter, two Zooms and one site meeting with the board. And at that meeting, they didn't, they, they asked us if we would cut back on the tree removal, and we did. So that has already been kind of looked into and compromised on. So there are trees now on the south side that, if, if I was looking at a safety and an aesthetic view, they should be removed, but we're leaving them. You could see in this photo what the, what the trees really look like. They were planted probably when the property was subdivided.
What view is that? Excuse me, Frank, what view is that? Is that the south side?
This is the view from the swimming pool to, from the, this picture is taken from the swimming pool.
Okay.
Back towards
This is the, this is the view issue. If these trees were removed, we would have clear line of sight. These are the trees that we really care about.
I got it. Right.
These are the, these are the trees we're talking about.
So that's actually super helpful, I think, to know that there was a, a, a a larger request on the table, and then that, that, that there was a, a movement backwards. From my perspective, Tom, I think you're right that the questions being asked of Dennis are, are helpful and interesting, but, you know, it's within our purview to, to figure this out, whether, what, what we think is appropriate, given all the concerns. The way I see it, there's a property owner who was looking to take down some trees. We are not that concerned about the habitat question. I agree with that. We want to make sure that replacement is sufficient. I, I think from my perspective, that has been satisfied and then some. We want to make sure that the absolute minimum amount of trees is being removed. It sounds like we've already made steps in that direction. I'm satisfied that this is sufficient. This, this picture up here is actually very helpful to me. And so I'm satisfied, and I think that we can, from my perspective, move forward here. I, I think we are in a place where we've asked all the questions, and at least I, I've heard all the answers. I actually do have one other thought, just a little bit, again, with this question of, you know, the, the, the two tax lots. If the property line wasn't there, if the two lots were merged into one, one, would the, would the property owner have to come before us to remove these trees?
I don't know if the quantity of trees would be sufficient to trigger a permit, but certainly the, the issue that's before us, which is the buffer and the, no.
So, so again, Can I, can I just interject for a second? Because the, really, the jurisdiction of the planning board here is triggered because some of the trees are within the clearing and grading limit line that was established by the planning board. So but for the trees being removed within the clearing and grading limit line, this would have been an administrative permit. So that's really the, the, the trigger for your jurisdiction at the planning board. The, the trees within the regulated buffer zone are subject to removal. They may be removed subject to a tree permit under chapter one twenty-one. The reason why you are now the approval authority for that is because of the clearing and grading limit line jurisdiction. So once you have jurisdiction over one part of it, you have jurisdiction over everything.
Got it. Super helpful. And we talked about this clearing and grading limit line last time. And basically, I think we agreed that it is a little, I don't know, it's not the typical clearing and grading limit line. It really creates this thin buffer between these properties. And to me, it's not, I mean, you know, but for this, you know, imaginary line, property line, this really wouldn't even be before us.
I don't think that's an imaginary property line. There's no such thing as an imaginary property line. It's either property line or there isn't.
It's true.
That, that divides these two pieces.
I, I understand, but, but, but it's the same property owner on both sides of it. And to me,
Same property owner.
Yeah, same property owner on both sides. I, I guess, you know, I've, I've heard enough, and I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward, but I've already said that a few times.
And these are the nine trees. What you're counting here are the exact nine trees that are within the clearing and grading limit line. And if any of those trees look healthy to anyone on the board, they're not. And I agree with the arborist. I was not involved with that, that analysis. But these trees were planted, when the property was subdivided, as small little hemlocks and spruces and a mix of kind of ornamentals. And they've just grown into this mess because they're so close, they're just, they're just unhealthy.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't like the fact that we don't have anything that happens later on, if and when there's a, a change in ownership. The applicant has a solution here, and that is if they merge the lots, this all goes away. And if you merge the lots, we don't have to deal with this, and you have your wide open area. So for whatever reason you don't want to do that, that's fine. That's, your, your, your issue. I, I agree with Tom, that I think this could be a little bit lighter touch, I think, notwithstanding the condition. Now that I understand that the conditions are probably promoted by the closeness of the, the planting that are thinning and limbing up with these trees, a few of the trees, clearing some of them, would achieve the open look that the applicant is looking for, but at the same token, maintain the semblance of the clearing grading limit line and the, the fifteen-foot buffer on each side. So, more to look at this, and now that I better understand what the, where we're coming from on the poor condition, where it seems to me, it may be a little bit more subjective. We all have all seen trees when they're planted close together. What happens? They lose the base of the tree. They look very ugly. The needles fall off, et cetera, when they're conifers. And, but if you have a, a mist in here, some deciduous trees, and if you limb those up to twelve, fifteen feet, you have basically a wide open expanse of turf underneath and a perfectly fine view. The same with conifers. If these are so bad at the bottom, I understand that. I, I see it in the picture. Seems to me that some of these could be limbed up. I'm not suggesting that you don't, I, I think thinning it out would, would make sense. But the issue here of, of a view shed, or not the view shed, I don't want to use that word because that's, that has nothing to do with this. But the view between the two lots, what we're hearing from the applicant, it doesn't have to be achieved with a wide open turf, just grass. So it can be achieved, it seems to me, with something I think Nick was alluding to, and I think Tom was alluding to, lighter touch, and limbing up and thinning some of these trees.
Chairman, I want to mention, it looks like we have a member of the public on Zoom with a hand raised.
Okay, sure. Can we recognize that person?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hi, I have laryngitis, so I apologize. My name is Margaret Ferguson, and I live on seventy-five Seven Bridges Road. So I'm the third lot north from this property. First of all, I want to thank everybody, everybody involved, for giving such serious consideration to this issue. It is very refreshing and very encouraging. So whichever way it comes down, I thank everybody. I also think the family that's got the application in, they're paying a lot more attention to this issue than many people do in this community, including in this area. We've had some lots very much decimated in this area by people who are a lot less sensitive. Maybe they're within their rights, but a lot less sensitive to tree removal. So I do thank everybody for giving such serious consideration to this issue. In terms of the trees that you're discussing, I support the idea that if any of them, one or two is in such a condition that it can be preserved, I hope it will be preserved. The photo that you just flashed, to me, yeah, it shows some dieback at the, near the ground level. But I'm a lifelong gardener, and I take care of my own yard. And what I see there doesn't tell me really the condition of the trees. In terms of the assessment made by Olmstead, a number of years ago, before Dennis, it was when Dennis's predecessor was with the town. I can't remember his name right now. But I came home one day, and I found a, a mature, healthy American elm flagged for removal by the county. And I believe they use Olmstead too. And Olmstead had misidentified that tree as a dead ash tree. And, and it wasn't. It's an American elm tree. And so it was quickly, when I called, called the town, he took care of it. And I asked him how an arborist could make such a grievous mistake between a healthy, living American elm tree and a dead ash tree. And he said, I can't explain it to you. So my only point is, you know, it is a matter of interpretation sometimes, and sometimes mistakes do happen. So I support the effort to maybe a little lighter touch on these trees. And, you know, I also appreciate the understory trees going in there and the planting by Seven Bridges Road, because right now it really is nothing aesthetically to speak of. And also, it's, I don't think it's really sort of and very supportive to the environment. It's very bland. You could have more plantings near the ground that would provide a lot more benefit to the creatures around us than what's there right now. So the understory trees, perhaps some shrubs in the area, would be a lot better than what's bordering on Seven Bridges right now. So that's my only point, is that I would hope, I support the effort to maybe look at the, the, I can still, I see that picture too, but it's, you know, with, they don't look that bad to me. I don't know what to, you know, maybe a tree can be cut out. I, I don't know if they have willia deljid, for example. They could. And if they had willia deljid, they've had, if those are, some of its hemlocks I can see, I guess some Norway spruce. I'm not sure what else is in there. But if they had willia deljid, a deljid does cause thinning out. And if it's treated, it, the needles will come back. So, you know, and treated with something that is, that is safe. So anyway, those are my points for the evening, and I do thank everyone for putting such effort into this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Curly, thanks for your comments. Frank, can you again address, please, the health of the trees and whether thinning out would make a difference?
Since these are all conifers in here, they're all evergreens. Once one is, once you start thinning, you end up, and they do not, at this age of the tree, once you pull out some trees and they're going to have a dead side, or in most cases here, three dead sides, they're not going to rebloom out. Now, we've got to look at this in perspective. And maybe this is what we're looking at to remove, and in exchange, we're planting fifty new trees. I see a balance that is far more towards a positive and longer life of newer trees. These trees, if they were left in this condition, provide, they're going to be gone in a few years anyway. One way or the other, if you read the report by Olmstead, they have cankers at the base. This is what we're looking at to remove to gain for the village fifty new trees. This is, the balance here is definitely towards the, the, the new plan. This is not aesthetic. It's limiting them up. We're going to be looking at, at conifers. When you limb up a conifer, you're destroying the whole idea of what a conifer looks like. They grow to the ground. And they do not have willia deljid. They have some canker. If you read that report, they're in quite detail of what's wrong with each of these trees within the clearing and grading limit line.
Would it be possible, Frank, then, to, as part of your planting plan, to replace these with a few, I say really a few, smattering deciduous trees that will grow, and they'll be limbed up, and you'll have the review? Whether you want to plant, you know, sugar maples or whatever you want to plant? Why can't we do that then? If you have to clear that out, and we still have a few new plants in there, you know, two and a half, three inch caliber? Again, not a wall, not a hedge, but something that looks very natural and that's, you know, consistent with what we, what we see around here.
That would be up to Mr. Goodstake, if he amenable towards that. That's not my decision.
But, you know, to, to what end? That, that doesn't address this neighbor's concerns from, you know, as far as height. And I don't know that it, you know,
Doesn't it take years for them to grow high enough to limb up anyway?
It depends on what tree it is, but it, well, it could take a number of years. My, my concern on this is still maintaining at least some sort of identification of this thirty-foot buffer. We do have two separate properties here, and that is what we do here. In one acre, in this one acre zone, we have a fifteen-foot buffer on either side. And we certainly understand it's a reasonable request to have the space that you can see. But the same token, and I'm not concerned about the height. I mean, I, I don't, I, I dismiss, frankly, that issue of the view shed, because I don't think that's what we, we talk about with view sheds. Someone else's property and what's on someone else's property. If you want to enjoy that property, buy the property. So that's not a concern. The concern is my concern.
Chairman, I have, Mr. Chairman, I have to take about a ten or a twelve minute break to take care of a personal problem.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Sorry. So that's my concern, to maintain some sort of demarcation that is at least somewhat consistent with our setback rule. And I, I appreciate what Frank is saying. Frank, I appreciate what you're saying, that with cankers and other conditions. And again, I haven't looked at that detailed condition report now for several weeks. But I can certainly appreciate and understand that you as a professional making those comments. But there is another solution. That would be to put a few trees in. I don't know what it would be. You, Dennis, could figure that out with the app. in, I don't know what it would be, you, Dennis could figure that out with the applicant, three, four trees, whatever it might be, that's my concern. My concern is maintaining that, shall we say, the integrity of the 15-foot buffer.
Mr. Chairman, again, if I could jump in for a second?
Sure.
If your concern comments about the integrity of the buffer, because of the enforcement mechanism down the road, I like to think I could work with Jennifer, work with staff in ensuring that upon a transfer, there would be a mechanism in place so that it would be enforced, so the integrity would be restored upon the two lots being owned separately. So, to plant a couple of trees now, to protect the integrity of the buffer out of a fear or a concern that however many years from now, the area would not be restored, we could legally put in place a document that could be enforced, the town would certainly get notice of any new owner taking title, and at that point in time, the town has the enforcement power to require the replanting to be established. I know the resolution doesn't require a declaration, go back to that concept of requiring a declaration to be recorded, that way the world is on notice that anyone taking title would have to restore and comply with the, that buffer requirement in the town code.
I mean, if there's language that can satisfy our council, then maybe that addresses this issue.
I think so, we've kind of wrestled with this language and the triggering of the language. So, we didn't want to do it as a, something that would be recorded, we thought that might be onerous, but what do you think, Jennifer?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is sort of the next level of enforcement that you can apply here. We have the condition in the resolution, which I believe was going to be a note on the plan as well, the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants, recorded in the county clerk's office, does put, you know, should, put the new owner on notice, you know, certainly that should be pulled up when that new owner takes title, it'll be part of the title report that there is that restriction in the property. And we can fold into that an affirmative obligation, either on behalf of the purchaser or the seller, to notify the town within a certain amount of time of the property conveyance, not just the assessor's office through the filing of a deed, but to affirmatively notify the development department of the property transfer with a, with a copy of the Declaration of Restrictive Covenants, so everyone is aware of the obligation.
And that's a great point, I mean, in larger development projects, if there's a transfer of an interest in a project, oftentimes that kind of notice to your municipality is required. So, that step, the declaration, Mr. Chairman, you used the word onerous, might it be onerous to a single-family lot? Yes, but I hear you're concerned on what you're wrestling with, so I think the compromise would be to go down that path, implement those steps to alleviate your concern, and allow the Gootsights to have that minus site that they desire for so long as they own both properties.
And Jennifer, would that be something that would be triggered on both properties, even if one is transferred? Seems like it has to be.
Yeah, I think it would be, to the extent there are trees being removed from the buffer on both sides of the lot line, then yes, I think that would be filed against both properties.
All right. Well, that would, that would help me a lot with just clearing it out at this point.
Well, if it doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't help.
I know, I know. I feared it didn't.
Sorry for this to go on and on and on, but, you know, it's, these clearing and grading limit lines give us no end of pain. And you almost regret that we have them, but I am very happy that we do, and they serve a purpose, and there's a reason for them. And in many cases, I wish that we could be more aggressive with them, but our legislation is our legislation, and we live by it. And living by it, I guess I would ask the following hypothetical, the next time somebody comes in who wants to take trees out of the clearing and grading limit line, because they want to see all the way to the limit of their property, and they make the argument that they have a right to see all the way to the limit of their property, and therefore, they ought to be able to take out the trees in the clearing and grading limit line, what do we say to them if we approve taking these trees out? Because it's the same condition, essentially.
This is a little bit different, I think, very special, and I think we would distinguish it on that basis because we have the same property owner. I mean, I agree with you, otherwise, it's...
Okay, so here, I have a proposal. Maybe this gets me around my problem. I still think we ought to find a way to save some of these trees. There are, the way, from my reading of this, there are four-way, four Norway spruce that are, were being told are planted so close together that, that they all need to come out, and I'm not buying that. Those are the ones that are directly in the, in the view from one property to another, and then there's a hem, a couple of hemlocks there, one's in bad shape apparently, and one's in good shape, but they all have to come out, I'm just not buying that. But, maybe the way to get around this is just to, let's just vacate the clearing and grading limit line. If this is a special case, let's get rid of the clearing and grading limit line, so we don't have this sort of glaring condition here that we are, and just declare that in this particular case, it's moved.
Well, that's interesting.
So, we don't have the special case, we're saying, yeah, but we're allowing this to happen.
Well, makes it a very special case, because, yeah, exactly, remove them, yep, and then make the other distinctive distinctions.
So, that gets me over the, you know, the code problems we have here, you know, our responsibilities, but I still think we have a responsibility to the trees themselves, and if there's a way to save some of them, and still satisfy the property owner that he, that they are essentially getting, you know, enough of a visual link between the two pieces of property, then I think we ought to make the effort to at least save that one good hemlock, there's no reason for that one to come out. And perhaps thin out, maybe save a couple of the other Norway spruce, but if they are in fact, in fact, in poor condition, then, you know, that's the end of that. So, my suggestion is to go down that path.
What's the mechanism on that, Jennifer?
I guess I'm not understanding how the end result would be different, because if you're removing the clearing and grading limit lines altogether, you're removing your jurisdiction with respect to any tree removal. So, because your jurisdiction is hinged only on the fact that those clearing and grading limit lines exist, and they're proposing to remove trees within those lines.
Oh, interesting.
And, but for that, it would be a tree removal permit by, by Dennis.
Interesting.
And that tree removal permit would just calculate replacements versus what's being taken down, right?
Yeah, it'd be essentially where you want to go, right?
But, but we still, I mean, I would have to try to get some provision, since they're being removed in the regulated landscape buffer, then that wrestling match would be, you know, with my mirror image, I guess, as opposed to the board.
Right. Oh, well. You know, I do, you know, there's this question of the condition of the trees, or what, the condition of the trees is being questioned, more accurately said, and I do want to be fair to the licensed, right, their licensed arborists, certified arborists that the town uses, right, in, in the absence of evidence otherwise, you know, professional evidence otherwise, and we have some photos, but, I mean, you guys are way better at this than I am, I mean, but I have no idea what I'm looking at when I look at photos like this, I can't tell you if the tree is healthy or not. But we do have, you know, Olmstead, the licensed certified arborist, who have told us, you know, and if someone is claiming otherwise, then I, then there should be some proof to that, but, but short of that, what we have, we have to go with the information that we So, I don't know that we need to put the assessment in question, but however you guys want to get to a point where you feel comfortable.
Right.
I get, I understand that, I understand there's questions of precedent, I understand there's a question, your, your last question, Tom, is a, is a good one, right? Let's say, these were two separate property owners, and, or in any other instance, a property owner says, "I want to eliminate all, all the trees going back to my property line." What would we do then? Well, this is a unique condition, there are two properties or a single property owner, we are talking about a potential, you know, restrictive covenant that addresses the issue if this, in the future, does become two separate property owners, which I think satisfies some of the concerns. I would love to figure out a way to satisfy all of the concerns. I'm not sure quite how to get there.
So, on the subject of the, of Olmstead's review.
Yep.
And their determination that the tree's in poor condition, did they make the determination that the tree needed to be removed? Or did they just say, "Well, it's in poor condition"?
Right.
And is that justification to remove a tree? I'm, I'm 74, just turned 74, I'm in poor condition. Now, maybe that's justification to remove me, but I want to give a tree a better chance than you guys might give me. I seriously, I mean, you go through, I walk in the forest every day.
Yep.
You know, right? And you see trees, and I've seen the same tree there that looks like it's in poor condition, it's still there 10 years later.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, that's fair. Happy birthday.
Is Dick back?
No, yeah. Okay. So, how do we, how do we, let's see, let me see if I can suggest what I think, because we got to, we have to...
Yeah, move on.
Help these people move on. I think that, a, I really think that just because a tree is in poor condition is a justification for its removal. That's what I think. I can understand the desire of a property owner to want to remove some trees, and with the, with the objective of getting a better landscape environment for their home, that's certainly a legitimate desire. I am looking at 200-caliper inches being taken out, and the planting schedule, it looks to me like there's 15 inches put in. Now, Dennis will, maybe my calculations are wrong, but that's what's on the plant schedule here. So, I want to be sure that we get that right, that just doesn't seem to be the right ratio here. Maybe if a tree is called, is, is in poor condition, you don't have to, you don't have to replace it. I don't know what the, I forget what the, what the code says, the tree code says about that, maybe that's why there's only like 15, 20 inches in replacement trees for 200 being taken out. But it seems to me like, that the, unless I'm wrong about that, it seems to me that the, that the, that the ratio's out of balance. Am I wrong about that, Dennis?
Well, you only have to replace a percentage of the total, and based on the trees that are less than 18 inches, it's just...
Less than 18 inches.
It's 25% of that, and there's only a few that rose to the 50%, so that's why that number got cut. And I guess to your point, you know, about the code, the only recommendation that's listed that I could recall from a certified arborist is to determine if a tree rises to a level or meets like a hazardous condition, that it could be removed without a permit, and there is a caveat in there that, you know, the environmental coordinator may require, you know, site visit, photo justification to make that determination. But, and I'm happy that it doesn't exist, that the condition of a tree necessarily dictates replacement, because there are those that can create their own condition of decline by, you know, over trimming, over limbing, planting them too close in the first place, and then, you know, having them decline as they advance. So, I, I've used that as my latitude to say, "Well, I'm not just looking at today's condition, I'm looking at the totality and the time, and these trees were not given the best opportunity, therefore I think they should be replaced," so.
Okay, so, so let me see if I can...
Just to clarify, I think maybe the caliber inch issue might be, if you're adding up those caliber inches there, which I think is how you got to your 15 to 20.
Yeah.
You have to multiply by the quantity, you see to the left.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a total game changer.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to say that, to get back to how that, the trees that are in poor condition are included in that calculation. By the town code, the only trees that would not have to be replaced are those that are dead. So, anything that's in poor, fair, good condition has to be calculated as a replacement tree.
Thank you. And it is in this schedule, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So, this is what I would feel comfortable with. I think that we should not vacate the clearing and grading limit line, I think it ought to stay there because there is a property line there, and so we ought to maintain that zone. I think that we can make a special dispensation because of the special condition here, because we have, right? But that's got to be very clear in the resolution. And it seems to me that if we can get some stipulation upon transfer of property, or whatever the right trigger is, to, to, to get the clearing and grading limit line, that zone replanted as a buffer, I think we ought to find a way to do that, that'd be great. And I do think that the healthy tree shouldn't come down. I don't, I don't understand why we're taking down, there are two 10-inch caliber trees here, that according to the schedule, a hemlock and the other one is a...
Norway maple.
Is it, is a...
Norway maple, yeah.
Norway maple. If we could, we could keep those, it seems to me that that, there's no reason why we ought to be taking down these trees within the great clearing and grading limit line if they're healthy. That's how I feel, that's what I think maybe should get us through this. As a minimum.
Yeah, I, that would work for me. Yeah, and as long as we come up with legal language that Brad has suggested that we can come up with, that would be triggered, and the town would be on notice, the expected buyers in the future would be on notice. I don't know if you want to go as far as you want to have a contingent planting plan ready, but, you know, I think that's too far.
I wonder to what extent this recommendation is acceptable to the applicant.
Yeah.
I expect to hear from them. I don't think it's going to go unremarked.
I guess that's the drumroll. Yeah, I mean, thank you all for that comment, I mean, that's what I was going to jump in with, I mean, Mr. Curly, everything that you outlined are all steps that, that we would agree to, I think, but those two trees, that is part of our removal plan. And I'm just not, I guess the compensation of all the tree replacement offsets, more than offsets, the impact of removing those two trees, which helped accomplish the Gootsight's goals and objectives. So, I hear you, submitted on balance, given everything else, and the extent of replanting, that we still, our ask is still to take down the 19 trees I showed on the plan. It looks like Brian may want to jump in.
Yeah, I guess I'm up here. I guess if you guys are telling me, if this planning board is telling me that this is what I need to agree to to make this happen, then I will agree to it. I respect the authority of this board, I chose to come before this board. I will say, as a property owner here, I'm eight months into this process, my legal bills are in the five figures, that doesn't include $3,000 for an arborist report, I, I'm, I'm just kindly, as, you know, a taxpayer, and like, you know, a good citizen of this town, I'm, I'd really just like those two trees to come down too, so that I could enjoy my property the way I want. You're telling me, no, we're not going to do that for you? I'll say okay, but I am just kind of asking nicely, once, if, if you wouldn't mind, I'm planting 59 new trees, and I'm hoping that that makes the people on this planning board feel okay about making an exception in this case. That's kind of all I have, but if you won't, I'll leave them, I just would appreciate it if you did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm supportive of those trees coming down for the applicant request.
Okay. Dick, you haven't missed much, actually, by not being here, because we tend to talk in circles here, but in any event, any thoughts, we're, there's some thought about a lighter touch, I think something along the lines that you were talking about before is a compromise, and if you want to ask any questions or weigh in on this, it might be helpful. You might be muted, Dick. Dick, I think you're muted.
Jennifer, you're shaking your head.
There you are, there you are. Dick?
Can you hear us?
Go ahead.
Can you hear us, Dick?
Yeah, I think the chairman is asking for your opinion, Dick.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's a little bit more work to be done to... Okay, well, it sounds like there's a little bit more work to be done to, to come up with a slut, a lighter touch, as Tom put it so well. And that, that, you know, we don't have to knock down trees that are healthy, even if they are in the grading and limit line, unless we're going to do something construction-wise that was going to destroy them. You know, so those, there are a few trees that should be saved. And I think that this, this can, you know, with a little bit of good, good observation. We need Dennis to be back out in the field and, and give some suggestions to, to Mr. Giuliani's firm. And, you know, and I think we're, we're close to a solution, but we, we're not there yet.
So if I could, if I could, sorry. We came to this meeting with the intention of moving this along.
Right.
And I think that we ought to move this along tonight if we can. I, for my, my sake, I don't feel the need to go out and do any more site investigations. I don't take Homestead's word for it. They are arborists. Just because the trees are poor doesn't need, they mean they need to come down, I believe. The applicant makes a very good case that the replacement schedule is very aggressive. And I think will be a benefit to the neighborhood. Actually, the placement schedule may end up providing more habitat than, than these few trees we're talking about that are going to come down if habitat is a concern, and it always is for birds. And squirrels. Squirrels are going to go wherever they want. So I do think though, that it is, it is wrong to take down these two healthy trees. I just feel that it's unnecessary. I understand it's necessary from the applicant's point of view. But I'm not sure it's justified, justified from the town's point of view. I would like to move it along with the stipulation that we talked about earlier, which is the stipulation that two trees remain, clearing and grading limit line remains. And that there is something in codified that says that it'll be, the buffer zone will be replanted one day should the property change hands. And move this to a resolution if we can tonight. Now, somebody has to write that up. But I think it might be possible for it to be written up and we can authorize the chairman to sign it. I don't know whether we can do that. Can you go ahead and sign?
Well, we can, we can articulate language and that will be the amendment. I don't, I don't think we're going to have the ability to whip up the, maybe the legal language that we need that Brad and Jennifer will have to agree to. But we can certainly stipulate that that's what it's going to be. I think worst-case scenario, we can get the business deal done and then we can just come back. You don't have to be here. Just come back for the resolution itself as amended and we'll sign off on it and approve it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's from the declaration of restrictive covenants. I think as long as we understand what sort of hallmarks of that are important to the board. For example, it has to be recorded against both properties. There has to be affirmative notice to the development department specifically by either the purchaser or the seller. And we can, you know, we could figure that out upon property transfer. And the fifteen-foot buffer on each property, so a total of thirty feet, has to be restored pursuant to a plan submitted to the town environmental coordinator to his or her satisfaction. So I think if, if we're in agreement that those are the hallmarks that we want to have within that declaration, then the exact language of what goes into the resolution is, you know, I, I don't know that we need to, to craft that as we sit here tonight. And of course, if there's any other hallmarks that you would want included in there, we can discuss those in order to bring this to closure.
Then would that just be a condition of the resolution, Jen?
Yep. Exactly.
Any other resolution?
Yep. And to be done before the issuance of a permit, to be recorded, you know, proof of recording submitted prior to a permit.
Right, so. Yeah, I think that, that's, I think that should go to Tom, the building inspector, I think. What do you think, Sabrina?
Sorry, my, my mute button seems to not be working tonight, but I agree with that, Bob.
Thank you. So that's that issue. When we come down to really the issue now, just what, what do we want to leave? Eldad is, is fine with the applicant's application to clear the trees as proposed. I think, Tom, you're still looking at the two, to keep the two good ones. Dick, where are you on this?
I, I don't mind if there's a, you know, there's some words that, if it's a hallmark or not or not. But that, you know, we, we don't agree with taking down, you know, trees that are healthy unless something is being built there to require they be removed. And secondly, I think that, you know, there's some additional work can be done. I have no problem with it being put into the resolution that it work that way, because it's not like we're going to change, you know, ten trees or something like that. It's going to be a handful, you know, to, you know, thin out, you know, in some places. And, and see what happens there. And, and like I keep saying, and what Tom says too, you know, there are some healthy trees and why should they be taken down? So I think those are small enough that they can be put into the resolution. And it can be left up to staff to, you know, get to the point that we're, we're looking at.
I'm not, I just want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm no longer suggesting that the, that the trees that are in poor condition, that are apparently planted too close together, that they be thinned out in order to save them. I'm, I'm saying that it's okay to take them out as long as the other two healthy trees remain.
To be clear, we're, we're talking about tree number six.
Six and eleven. And eleven, or is it?
So eleven is within the clearing and grading limit line.
Yep.
I'm, I'm happy to keep six in the spirit of compromise if that works for you guys.
I'm trying to find six again.
Six is like.
Do you see my cursor?
Yeah.
Where is it?
Can you point it out? I've lost my drawing.
It's, I'm trying, but this may highlight everything. Now, let's see.
I see eleven, of course.
Six is over there.
It's over here somewhere, right? I don't see it.
It's just to the right of the septic area.
Got it up here.
Got it. Got it, okay. By the way, the, Frank, the roots on the number six, and do they come in, come into, do they impact the septic area? I mean, Norway's roots are pretty wide and shallow.
That, that septic line, the actual fields are within ten feet, I'm sorry, five feet of the actual line. The septic box that the engineer drew is the extent of the septic fill. So the, there really won't be any impact from number six on the septic system.
Fine, okay, thank you.
Let's take the deal. So it's six and eleven.
Right.
He's saying six stays.
No, six stays, eleven comes down.
No, no.
So, Mr. Curly, out of the two healthy trees, the compromise would be one, one stays, one, one gets removed.
Well, I see the compromise is the two healthy trees stay and all the other trees can come down.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that.
Well, we need to vote, I guess. I mean, what are we voting on, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we could have a motion. Someone could make a motion in terms of what they'd like to see in the resolution.
Okay, I'll make a motion and we'll vote on it.
Yeah.
Should I go?
Sure, make a motion that you want to keep eleven and six.
You're making it for me.
No, no. But not very well.
So I, I move that the, that the resolution stipulates that the rating and grading, well, we don't have to say that because we're not.
Chairman, I'm sorry. This house of PD would like to speak again.
Well.
Public hearing, now, are you closing?
No, we haven't closed it, no.
Okay, just because I just wanted to ask you for a question.
Better do it now, because we're about to.
Come on up.
One, I just, I just realized there was one question that I didn't have. You have to go to the. Oh, I know. I've just, there was one question, Mr. Giuliani, that I didn't have completely answered. And it's in the upper left-hand corner, like the northeast corner of the property, where there are, I guess it's stipulated, or it's mentioned right in the document plan, that the shrubs will stay. Do you know what I'm referring to? The understory shrubs in that northeast corner of sixty-three will stay.
There's nothing being removed anywhere except on the trees. The, the rest of the property stays exactly like it is.
Okay, so even the, the smaller caliber trees in that corner will stay?
Yes.
Not just the big, huge trees and not just the shrubs, but the smaller, like, you know, four or five caliber trees.
Yes.
Stay there, the understory. Okay, that's my main question. And then I just wanted to say, this is an interesting question about whether the town should have an independent arborist.
Okay, that's enough.
Really, but no, I think that's a little. No, no, but I'm saying that.
Okay, but.
That's for the town board. Go to town board.
Oh, that's enough, okay. Okay, that's enough. But please, dear staple, because I'm just, I, it is, the trees look very healthy. I'm, I'm supportive of you doing this. I, I'm supportive of that space being cleared. But it is an interesting, so subjective.
Can I make a motion?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry. What is your name again? Eldad? God, God help. Thank you.
So I, I move that we approve the application with the clearing and grading limit line in place, the legal language to satisfy the concern that a new owner water either of the properties with the affirmative language that Jennifer talked about, that the trees that are proposed to be removed are all removed with the exception of tree number six.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Now, can I just clarify? Are, are you voting on the resolution as amended? As, as, I just want to make sure that we understand what, what vote we're taking right now. Is this a vote on the application or just a vote on potential changes to the resolution? And then you'll have further discussion about maybe another set of potential changes to the resolution.
Right, this is the vote on the changes to the resolution.
My language isn't, you know, I'm not the chairman.
Right.
No, I just want everyone to be clear about what, what is being, being voted upon and whether this is your, your vote on the application or not.
Right.
Good.
So.
It sounds like it's not. It's just a vote to determine what potential changes.
Jennifer, I might ask for a straw poll depending, so.
Of course, do we have, do we have a second? So if we don't have a second, the motion dies. Do we have another motion?
I make the motion that we don't have to make the motion of grading and grading minimalized. Now it stays, because that's.
Correct.
Subjective.
Yeah.
That there be a language that Jennifer suggests we put in there in order to reestablish the buffer zone for, in, in the future. And that the trees, number, tree number six and eleven stay.
Okay, six and eleven. And Tom, where do you stand on, on the, the thinning of trees?
I think that the other trees, as, as requested, could come down.
Yeah, okay. So that's so thinning would be part of it potentially?
No.
No?
Yeah.
You can take it down.
Because the, the, the replanting schedule is really quite aggressive and touches really all parts of the property, and I think that that's a benefit to the neighborhood. And by the way, there needs to be a, I think, also, there needs to be a stipulation that this is being done because of the special condition of the two properties being.
The co-ownership, of course. Yes, that's got to be.
So essentially, it's, the removal permit request is, is granted with the exception of tree six and eleven. Make a clearer way to put it.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor of that motion? Do a straw vote, I guess. Dick?
Nay.
Eldad?
He said nay?
He said nay. Remind people that the three people are necessary to carry the motion.
I, well, I guess the question is, before I vote, I mean, if we don't have a majority for that amendment, where does that put us?
Here, still.
Have another, have another session, I guess.
Oh, we don't want to.
No.
Okay, then, then I.
I, okay, I'm, you, Tom, you're I. It's your motion, I'm I. So the motion carries then three to one. So that would be the language that would be incorporated, Jennifer, into the amended resolution.
Okay.
And that resolution can be amended and we can, we can sign that in our next meeting. Will that be available?
I, I think that's what we should do, because I think there are enough changes in here. Again, this is not, we could close the public hearing and then just have the resolution prepared. So it'll be out and ready, of course, to vote on next time, which will be in two weeks. Does that sound
doable?
Reasonably amenable to folks?
We could, I mean, we could, I guess, do the language now. But I think that there's consideration needs to be given to Jennifer for her piece, which might require a little bit more than just.
Yeah, all the pieces. And again, this, this really will not hold you off. There's no need for any, any additional work or anything else. It's just, it's done. And it's just the formality of the resolution, so you can go forward and do your stuff. We were actually hoping to do that tonight, but. Anyway. So is there a motion then to close the public hearing on this action?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dick, were you aye? I didn't hear.
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. And is there a motion then to direct staff to redraw and amended the resolution for our next meeting? To amend this proposed resolution?
And it needs to be of the changes to the drawings to.
Yes, good point. Yes, good point. The tree schedule needs to be amended to.
I'm not sure if the replacement now gets affected, because now two more trees are being saved. So we got to look at those calculations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it possible for you to do that by the December twentieth meeting, Brad?
Yes. But I'm not sure, it doesn't change anything on your end. If you guys are still going to plant everything you want to plant, and you're just deciding to save two trees, I, unless you guys want to plant less, that's the only way it would change anything.
Yeah, we have, we have discussed that internally, Dennis, and we'll get back to you.
All right, let's just keep in mind the timing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, please. So, Felicia, we would really like, like to have this material as soon as possible, right? So we can.
Okay.
So as soon as you can, great. So we, we have a motion then to do that? Is there a motion to do that? Direct staff to, yeah, some, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries for zip. We somehow got to tonight's finish line.
Yeah, I just want to make a footnote here, which is this has been torture for me personally. I don't know about everybody else. I suspect it's been the same. This has been an especially difficult one. And I, I really, really appreciate everybody, your patience and your kind consideration for what we're trying to do up here. I'm really thankful that you guys have decided to come to us. And I hope that everything's going to turn out fine in the end.
Can I add to that? Sure. Um, you know, I, I, I agree. I appreciate the input from all parties. And I think that it's important that we take these questions seriously, that we don't just rubber stamp applications or just, you know, we just take, we, we take it all seriously. And there's a lot of precedent, you know, in, in these types of applications. And so I think the questions about precedent are important. And I also think that, so, you know, a lot of the discussion has to do with this specific property. But not just this specific property, right? It applies to everything else that we think about that comes before us, that has come before us in the past, and it will come before us in the future, and the implications there are. Which is why sometimes it takes a long time to get to a place. But, so I appreciate all the effort on, from all stakeholders.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move now to our next item. This is the public hearing on Stansky. This is one hundred eighty Quoten Avenue. This is an application for a site development plan approval.
Hi, I'm Mary Scott, the architect. Stan Stansky's here as well. Can I share my screen?
Please.
Chairman, before we get started, just a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Yes, is there a motion though to open the public hearing on this application?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. When you get through the paperwork.
Okay, anyway.
Smaller. Hold on, I gotta move my pictures out of the way. Get this smaller, sorry. This minus here. Oh, yeah, sorry. Much open here. Okay. So here's our survey.
Right.
As we spoke about before, the majority of the Stansky house is in Mount Kisco. A little bit originally in Newcastle, and then when the Surf Lane subdivision was done, mine in two thousand one, a piece of property became available, and it was termed vacant land, not a building lot. Two stipulations were the site easement on Croton Avenue and Surf Lane to be kept open, and the clearing and grading line, which surrounds this area, not to be disturbed. So over the years, the area has been maintained. There were some ash trees that had died along the way and were cleared out, but the Stanskys have taken nice care of their property. In two thousand one, we started designing an addition, which is here. And because, let me just go down here.
Two thousand twenty-one, Mary.
Two thousand twenty-one, sorry. Across the street from Stansky's house, there is a I'm sorry. I got a, two hours of watching the other got me a little discombobled. Anyway, here's the entrance to the the sawmill. And so because of that, a road here, no parking on Croton Avenue. When we proposed to build the addition, the contractor advised putting in a road from Croton Avenue that would access the site. And as you can see, one of the issues with the topography is everything is flowing down towards Stansky's property and also to Surf Lane. So what happened was in May, the addition was finished. The road had come through, the contractor cleaned up where the road had been, put down topsoil, seed, hay, but we had a huge thunderstorm and the water washed down from the, all the streets above. And because this was all disturbed earth, there was dirty water that basically flowed down to the neighboring five Surf Lane. In addition, when the contractor had run some pipes out to the edge of the property, and that also directed water toward the neighbor. So you know, the the intention with building the road was never to disturb the earth. I mean, it was kind of a logistical decision that was made. I missed the fact that we were in the clearing and grading line at the time, and so it became a problem. Immediately to mitigate the problem of the disturbed earth, there was more topsoil, seed, hay, to stabilize the area. And then we came up with a stormwater mitigation plan to take the water from the addition and bring it down along the side of the property to the area down here, so it would gradually spread out to a lower area where there's there's no houses or anything planted, and then it actually borders on sawmill property.
Right, and I think that our town engineer has indicated that he is satisfied with that remedial stormwater solution.
Right, and he had a couple of points about it, and we're gonna take care of those.
Right, and we can condition those. He's comfortable with that. So I think we're in pretty good shape on the stormwater, aren't we, Bob? Maybe I, you know, I don't wanna take your thunder away, but I-
No, Mr. Chairman, you were absolutely correct. I think it's a commendable stormwater plan to mitigate the issues at hand. I just have extra notes. I can go over if you like when you get to me, so yes. But to answer your question, yes, the stormwater plan is acceptable.
Maybe we should open the planting plan, because I think that was what we-
Okay, exactly. So so just through the help of Bob and Dennis, we actually did quantify the area of disturbance and the area within the planting and grading that, or the clearing and grading line that was disturbed. So these are the stakes, kind of showing that. This colored area shows, and you can see how the water just rushed down here, and that was part of the issue. The other thing is what we're trying to introduce in the planting plan, this is kind of the scrub that has existed between this property and Surf Lane. And so we wanna introduce some of that back into this area as a buffer to help mitigate the water coming down and to kind of naturalize the area. You can see if you go back, I mean, there always was a fair amount of turf here on the corner, on the, you know, the actual Stansky's front yard, but there was some brush coming in here as well as a few trees, and as I said, a number of the ash trees have died over the years. So this is two thousand seven. You can see not much change in two thousand thirteen and two thousand twenty-one. So this is a drawing showing the actual land underneath and the clearing and grading area. This is a picture of the thicket that is off to the side on the Surf Lane. So here's the planting plan. And Dennis made recommendations. Stan worked with Missy Fabel to come up with a plan that would actually improve what had been there. So this is a combination of four trees, two red maples, two sugar maples, viburnum, mixed shrubs, honeysuckle, a lot of underplanting with creek sedge. And then, in addition, putting in a row of spice bush on this side, also with the creek sedge plugs, in order to not only help the water that comes down from the road up above, but anything else that's generated as it goes over toward the Surf Lane property. And this is a drawing of those, that planting, kind of on the site plan. So you can see how, I mean, it really far exceeds what was there before and will form a nice buffer.
And just to add to that, Mary, from from our previous meeting, there there's been a considerable increase in the amount of plantings that we added. You know, basically, we went from two trees to four, and then all of the the underplanting, we, you know, we we took into account and really considerably filled the area. Just just to note the minor, but in the underplanting, there was a, in addition to the creek sedge, there's a golden ground cell. It's it's on the key of this slide, but the previous slide it must have fell off, but it it doesn't change the density. It's basically, it'll be placed in wet areas and dry areas based on the landscape. But yeah, so those are the notable changes that we did from from the last, again, a considerable increase in the in the volume of planting that we did.
Right, I think, Dennis, you were out with them and worked with them on this, and you were satisfied with what you're seeing and using native plants, et cetera?
Yes, and I think there was a spice pusher to growing where they're proposing to put row six by the Surf Lane, so I thought that was a good idea. I never had a problem cheating, you know? The site tells me what it wants. It's good to go with that.
Never thought you would consider nature to be cheating, but okay. So, yeah, again, it looks, it looks pretty good to us at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I I just have two quick questions. Am I wrong? I I must be wrong. I thought that honeysuckle was considered invasive. Is that, is that correct, or am I wrong about that?
Yes and no.
It's one of those nights.
Right. So so this this particular species, which which I did look up, because I get the same reaction when I hear that as the common name. This is actually a different genus, so this is, this is native, but to your point, yeah, a number of them are invasive. None of them are wetland plants, so they sometimes serve as a good upland indicator for me when I see them, but I agree they're not native.
And then the other, the balance of the property, which is not part of the landscape plan, can you remind me, some of this is going to be, I was mistaken, it's going to be lawn, and the rest of it was going to be moed meadow? Is that, did I, is my memory right about that, especially in the upper right-hand corner in the slide? That was going to be moed meadow up in there?
Well, this is, this is the site easement.
Right.
Your upper right-hand side. And, you know, we're filling in, and, you know, some of it's gonna bleed out, but the rest is, we're replacing turf, which was turf before.
Please define turf for me.
Grass.
You mean, okay.
I mean, if you look at-
You mean lawn?
Lawn, yes. I mean, if you look at what was there before, you know, this, I mean, it's pretty beat up and at this point, but, I mean, it was always lawn.
And it was always your intention that it remained as lawn?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it was necessary to comply with the site easement, right?
Right, on the Newcastle side, yes.
It needn't be lawn, though. It doesn't? No, it could be a moed meadow, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, in other words- Right, right. It's just gonna continue to be, the term that I use is maintained as a turf cover, meaning just based on the clippings and the, you know, height of those clippings, but whatever wants to grow there, right? You're not gonna make it just a monoculture of the same species of grass, exactly. You're just gonna keep them on.
Okay, so that's not lawn. Okay. All right, thank you.
Good. Sabrina, any questions, comments?
No, I I'm all set with this one. This is really just Dennis and Bob's application.
Okay, great, thank you. Bob, you heard some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Basically, one through four, just some technical areas that I had commented on. I'll go through them real quick. Just some more clarifications on the level spreader. That's number one, and two, and three refer to the level spreader detail. On the plan, you had two areas of disturbance areas. I indicated on it that the one shown on the left-hand side should be removed. The one on the right-hand side is correct, so just created a little bit of confusion, just a typo. Most importantly, the asphalt is critical in this particular case, because I just wanna make certain it's put in according to the plan. It is critical to convey all that water away from the septic, and most importantly, I wanna make certain when they put in the piping, you have to maintain the minimum separation distances from the absorption fields to the drainage pipe, which I believe is twenty-five feet, as per county regulation, so that's the reason it'd be critical to submit the asphalt. When that will be, will you be doing that, Mary? Who will be doing the asphalt for you?
Um, we'll be coordinating with the surveyor and getting the asphalt done.
Very good. And also to make certain when this is being installed, that sometimes it slips through the cracks. Make certain your contractor contacts Terry Rowe for general conformance inspections of the stormwater inspections as well.
Yes.
And those, and newer revision date on there, too, because if there's not a revision date, you know, it makes a little bit of confusion. That's item number six, and that ends my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Dennis, did you have any additional comments or reset?
No, anything we incorporated into the resolution, I'm good.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any other comments, board members? Do we have any comments for the public? Anyone's hand raised?
I'm sorry?
No hands, okay, very good. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
Well, I got a, I got a comment or two.
Sure, Nick, sure.
What? In the document called Short Environmental Assessment Form, there's a couple of questions that weren't answered. Like, number two didn't have an answer. Number thirteen didn't have an answer. And I'm not sure I understand the, they I think there will be some stormwater discharges that flow to adjacent properties. Is that true? Or is this, this system gonna totally stop the flow to the next property? Reduce it? All the things that I hear so far are good reductions, really good.
Well-
They answered no, that stormwater discharges won't flow to an adjacent property, so that's number seventeen. Otherwise, I think it's a great, a great plan.
Um, just to answer your question, we're doing everything in our power for the stormwater that this house in addition is causing to keep it on our property. The water that's coming down from High Ridge and Croton Avenue, we can't control that. I mean, we're doing our best.
Of course.
But, um-
But that's what I think should be explained in here.
Okay, I I have no problem going back and-
I mean, and the number two, I thought you had to get approval from the state on something. And but you didn't answer that question.
That we're aware of, no.
No, really? What about in the setback?
Oh, well, that wasn't the state. I mean, we had to get a zoning variance from Newcastle.
Okay, so you got an approval?
We did.
A variance is an approval.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're saying state, and I don't have the form in front of me, so.
Okay, these are small things, but I, it's one thing that I find almost every time. So you're not alone.
Okay.
But, you know, you got a lot of questions to answer, and and I agree with, you know, all but the the few that I've suggested. And, you know, I think there will be some water that that, you know, carries forth, but your reduction program, I don't see how you can make it any better, so. I'm for the project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Do we then have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We have a draft resolution before us. I trust the applicants had a chance to look at it as well.
I had Stan, I believe, yes?
Yep.
I think there's one here. I marked it on one copy, but I seem to have lost my copy. It's just that somewhere in here, I think it was referred to as the town of Mount Kisco. I think it's really just a village. So wherever that might have been, it's just a minor correction.
Actually, town slash village.
There's a town. Well, whatever it is, that's fine. With or without that suggested change, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Well, I got a minor typo, but-
Okay, where is it?
It's on, this, we're doing the resolution, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, so it's page one, line forty. The applicants are proposing to implement of plantings. I think of should go away.
Okay.
And then I've given a couple of other comments to Felicia and that's, but there- That's, but they're, they're in the. Minutes, so.
Okay, that's different than, yeah, okay. So, yeah, we'll take out that word of. And otherwise, as we said. And so is there a motion to adopt the resolution with that amendment? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To the applicant, we discussed this informally. I know you've mentioned that you were getting some pushback or no cooperation from the village of Mount Kisco with regard to a curb. If it is helpful to you, we haven't quite figured out what the protocol might be. That this board or the town or the building engineering staff. Might coordinate with the village and see if they can't help you. To get that curb up there, which would I think help the situation for everyone.
That would be great.
So if you'd like to do that, I think Bob Celia has volunteered to talk to. Our DPW folks and maybe they'll talk to their DPW folks and see if they can find some asphalt around some night.
Before the plant closes?
Yeah, Mary, Mary, excuse me, Chairman, Mary, be helpful when we have that meeting, you're there to explain the situation. Because I'm still not quite certain whether it's in our town or Mount Kisco, but you'll be the best to let us know where it is, so. When we do make the meeting with Bart and someone with Mount Kisco, it'd be great if you can attend.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, actually, quite a bit of it is. Is.
The majority is Newcastle, the entire Surf Lane area, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I figured because I was looking at where the driveway access was, now that I'm looking at the plan in front of me. Yeah, it looks to me it's all in Newcastle, so I can coordinate with Bart. We can meet after with Mary and see what his opinion is of it. I can't guarantee anything, but I can coordinate the meeting.
Okay.
If you could push the cost over Village Mount Kisco, we appreciate it, Bob.
I'll try my best on that.
Fair enough.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We have minutes, we have the minutes of November 1, 2022. I made a couple of minor changes I've given to Felicia. Does anyone else have anything that's substantive? No?
Dick is giving me.
Dick's giving a couple of changes as well, okay?
I got some, there's some minor typos that Felicia will take care of.
Very good. Oh, then, okay?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion then to adopt the minutes of November 1 as amended?
Sure, with the, with the minor changes, right?
Right, exactly. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We have the minutes of November 15. Again, I think the same thing, probably some wordsmithing nonsense of.
So I was absent, so I'm not going to vote on these, on the 15th?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
That makes sense, yes.
Unless you watched on television?
I mean, I did closely, so I don't.
Do we have a legal forum to vote?
Yeah, does that affect their ability to vote?
Happy to vote on it, if, I mean, it's just the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, if you weren't here, I would recommend not voting on them, but do we have three people that were at the November 15 meeting also here tonight?
Yeah, I was.
So we have.
I was there.
Yeah, Dick was there, so.
He was here.
Yeah. Dick Chairman and Tom.
Yeah, so there is a forum, okay.
Yep.
It wasn't remote.
No.
Right.
Sorry.
Is there a motion to approve those?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Felicia's put together the 2023 Action Pack Planning Board Tour for 2023. There's one change. November 7 is Tuesday, the election day, so that will actually be Wednesday, November 8. But otherwise. We think we coordinate around holidays pretty well and I think we're in pretty good shape.
Have we booked all the arenas and all?
All of them, yes, exactly, opening acts and everything. So our next item is a discussion item. This is the opportunity for public property and the Chapakua Hamlet, continued discussions. I'll give you an update.
Do you guys need to pass resolution adopting that?
I guess we probably should, right?
Yeah, and that's why you have it.
Yeah, there should be a motion.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the tour?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the update, I just wanted briefly, I did have a conversation with the supervisor and Sabrina jumping when, you know, we talked about the RFP. But apparently the RFP is out for the survey. I think they're waiting for answers, responses on the RFP and they're due in a couple of weeks, December 15, 16, something like that.
The 15th.
15th. So the next steps, as articulated by the supervisor and where we fit in on this, is that the. You know, the town board perhaps with or without our help will obviously. Look at the RFP results and then pick the consultant. So I'm unsure whether we'll be involved in that, whether people want to be involved or they want us to be involved, which is fine. But after that, I think the plan is that they want to work jointly with us regarding the public engagement. To help craft the questions for the survey with the consultant. So giving guidance first of all to the consultant, which I think makes real important sense, so we don't go off the tracks. And probably this will be done over two meetings. I think the. The deal probably will be somewhere in early to mid-January, a preliminary meeting, a joint meeting between the planning board and the town board. Before we have a meeting with the consultant, so we can lay out the issues and lay out the thoughts and getting everyone together. With a consensus and then meeting with the consultant. And then. Once, you know, the survey results are back, then at some point. The town board will probably turn over to someone like ULI, not necessarily ULI, someone like that to. Start to firm up the plans and tell us about the constraints and how this all might work. So. That's where we are. So nothing between now and the holidays. The town board only has one more meeting left, so to wait. I don't think there was any appetite to do anything until they've had a chance to look at the responses from the RFP. So it seems to make good sense to us and I was very appreciative that there was a willingness to reach out and. You know, all the work that we've done on our so-called North Star, I think that's going to be the kind of information that's going to be very helpful for that first meeting. As we meet with the town board on this. So that's where we are. If people want to add anything else. By all means, questions, I mean, that's, that was it.
Just a question, so the, sorry, to clarify, you said the RFP went out? And then who wrote the RFP and what did it ask?
Right, Screenout wrote it?
I wrote it and the town board commented on it. And legal reviewed it.
Just in, sort of in big picture, what did it ask for?
It's asking for a consultant team to assist the town with putting together a community-wide survey regarding the use of public property in the Chapakua Hamlet.
Got it. And there's a deadline for responses?
The December 15th.
Got it.
All right.
Exciting.
Yep, so it's, it is moving forward. There was in our packet. Is this, yeah, is this mine? Is that yours?
I think that's mine.
Okay, that's right. Anyway, there was in our packets, it's not on the agenda this evening, but I, you know, take a careful look at it. This is on North Greeley, an amendment to the proposal for amended special use permit. Change in the law designed for North Greeley and. Look at it carefully. Our comments are due back by January 15th. It will be on our agenda for the next meeting, December 20th. From my perspective, it seems very rough to me and requires a good deal of tightening in terms of language, et cetera. One thing that we, I think as a substantive issue is I think we need to be mindful of parking constraints. You know, we talked about a parking study at one point. Now we're seeing why that might be necessary and why it could be important. So as you go through it. We should, I think that would be helpful for us to lend support and comment to the town board. On that issue. But take a look at it, we'll, you know, we'll have probably a couple of swings at it. Because we'll see it on December 20th, we'll probably see it for our first meeting in January as well before we are due to have it back to the town board by December, excuse me, January 15. So it is. It is what it is. It's only a draft at this point, as I understand it, and. I think there's probably going to be a good deal of work on it, but we'll take it from there.
Yeah, I just glanced at it, knowing that it wasn't on our agenda time, but. There's some really big issues in here about zoning in particular and, you know, how it should be used and all those things.
Right.
So it's not just design stuff, you know, it's.
Oh, no.
Yeah, planning stuff, there are bigger issues that perhaps we are being asked to think about also, but I think we should think about all of it.
Yes, I agree. I think we really, this is the, you really have to project when you take.
I'd like a copy of what it is now too, because I'm. I'm not able to get into the. The, you know, the. Whole system that the town has to get to the right place, so I have to go and talk to the internal expert on computers.
Okay.
It means he can't get his email. I don't think it means he can't get his town email.
Town email, right. Well, this was in the packet itself. Are you getting your packets, Dick? Can you go down to get the packet or no? I'm happy to drop it off if you can't get them.
Well, the packet that came.
It was the proposed local law NG0 special permit.
It's a, it's a, from Felicia. Right up in the upper left-hand corner.
You should have it, it was part of the packet. Also to let you know, the applicant has asked to come in and provide you with a concept discussion to frame. The legislation.
My mistake. I still can't access it on the, in my hand it is, so that's good. Thank you.
But I didn't want to say.
Sorry, Sabina, you said that the applicant wants to come further discuss.
The applicant will be present, the applicant will be present on 12/20 to provide a concept. Overview of the project that they are looking at, which is the basis for the NG0 legislation.
You mean they're on our agenda for that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Are they asking anything of us or just?
No, no, they know that you are reviewing the legislation as per the referral from the town board. They thought giving you contacts for that referral would be helpful.
That's great, but there's no actual application for that before us?
No.
All righty. So that's about it. Is there a motion then to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.